Good evening. It's six o'clock, it's time for our regular scheduled board meeting, December 17th, 2019, 6:00 PM. I've asked Commissioner Hale to do our invocation and our pledge, if everyone please stand.
Bow your heads, please. Lord, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the blessings we receive. Lord, we hope and pray that you'll watch over us and guide us and direct us as we make the decisions of our community and for the best of our people. Lord, we pray for our first responders, we pray that you'll watch over them, there's a lot of crazy things going on in this world, just pray that you'll have a hand on them as well. Lord, we pray for our men and women abroad that may not be able to come home for Christmas and be with their families and be so lucky as we are. And last but not least, Lord, we pray for your son, Jesus Christ, for all the things he's done for us, in Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, delivered in justice for all.
Commissioner Gamble, will you pull that microphone in there a little closer? Sir. I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight and just look forward to having a productive meeting and being the last one of the year and we'll move forward. First thing on the general agenda is the approval minutes, December 3rd, 2019. Do we have any additions or corrections to those? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fleming.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion carries. Next is the consent agenda, I have items two through four for approval. Do I have any items wishing to be pulled for discussion? If not, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gamble, a second by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Mr. Pravat, do you have anything you would like to say? This will be your last chance this year.
I will, I will comment maybe on the additional agenda items, but that'd be it.
Okay, thank you so much. Moving forward, staff reports, item number five, we have the one and only, Mr. Jimmy Norris.
They clap because they know how short this is gonna be, right?
Yes, we do.
I got one request for one commissioner for 15 minutes and everybody else wanted 30 seconds, so do you want to vote on that now or?
I'm gonna just stay quiet and listen to you.
Alright.
We want some good information though, I will say that, I've had some folks, we want some good information bringing us up to speed on what's going on in the county.
You know I can't talk about it.
Well, I can't hold these folks off for so long, so you may have to share a little bit.
Alright, it is good to be here and I do appreciate all you guys and everyone, the staff county, everybody, Merry Christmas. It is, it is indeed an honor to be a part of this team, I really do mean that, so. On the economic development front, I will mention that October 27th through 29th obviously has already passed, but I was able to attend the Future of Florida Forum. And just so you guys know, that's pretty much all things that have to do with the state of Florida. We're talking about the 2030 plan and everything, you know, moving forward. Everything from workforce development, you know, cyber fraud, big discussion on the hemp industry obviously this year, economic development, manufacturing, and a lot of good stuff about NASA. If you guys haven't looked in on NASA lately, it's amazing what's fixing to happen there. I mean, they're gonna be building their own space station by 2024, we're gonna be regularly flying to that space station and to the moon. And it's private and public partnerships that are doing a lot of this stuff, and it is so neat, I mean, it's incredible where that race is going. So, learned a lot of good stuff. I'll give you another quick update, our Madden Media, which you know is our marketing company, website company that we use for both tourism and economic development, they're working on our new website obviously, and right now, we're getting real close to actually pulling that thing out. The piece we're working on right now is, I'm being rather picky about how, what we have learned is when people come to our sites, especially site developers, they won't basically one click to find the property that they're looking for, they couldn't care less about all the other stuff. So, we're trying to be very careful that this is designed so when someone's coming and looking for a particular site, that they can come to that page, click on the button and they can search and find what they want. So, we're, we're trying to be sure that we, we make it as easy as possible for the end user when they're, when they're searching Swanee County. Also, as you guys know, Mr. Shannon is not here, is he? He's my partner in crime on telecommunications, I don't know what I would do without him, he's got a lot of insight about, about that industry. And we have been meeting, and I've got a couple of other partners back here too, Mr. Scott and of course, our friend Ms. Catherine who are very helpful, and they can tell you that we're, it may not seem like we're getting anywhere, but we're kinda just flipping stones and we're looking at, at things that, rural counties are tough, and it's tough to find what you need to get everybody online, so to speak. And other states, other communities have taken different approaches and we're looking at, we're looking at some options to help Swanee County. And there's some interesting things out there, so it's a lot of work and it's nothing that happens fast, but, but I do, and I think these guys will agree, Shannon is such a huge part of helping us with that, he's been able to open some doors for us, so. The census and the complete count committee, I'll give you a quick update on that, of course you guys know we were down at the Candy Carnival, I think all you were down there at Halloween and we were at Christmas on the square. I want to pass around, these are, these are some of our marketing materials, the static clean, you can all put in your vehicles to say that you're a proud participant in the 2020 census, not a sticker, Commissioner Gamble. But, but it is something to promote and help get it out, and we can get as many of those as we need. And then the rack card is something that we've made more personable to Swanee County, and it just kinda takes some of the big components and highlights it, to try to make it simple for people, so when they see it, you know, there's so much information out there that we can, we can bombard people, but we try to hit some high points. And this is just kind of the first, first piece, and we had this at Christmas on the square and passed out hundreds of, of those cards. So, we will be moving forward, you're gonna see a big push on the census side, starting in January, and we're partnering with a lot of these guys I hear as well, who have gladly stepped up to help us kind of find those targeted areas where we know we're lacking as we move forward. And Ms. Jennifer, she's, she's been a real angel to us, she's a hard worker, and I mean, she's, the census committee is really, really fortunate to have her as a part of our team and, and I guess, are you staying on that team? Or you, did you get kicked off?
I don't know yet.
Was that on the list, is he still there?
He's still on it.
Oh, he's still there, okay, so Commissioner Gamble's doing a fine job on the census committee, and we appreciate him and all that he's doing, so.
We figured since he's running for office, he's gonna be seeing every resident in the county, take one of these.
You know, yes.
We actually talked about that at one of the meetings.
Yeah, we, he actually volunteered door to door, so. We need any of those for the north end?
That's the south end.
The south end?
Oh, you got your.
I'm sorry, wrong end, south end?
Yeah, as many as you can get, I guess.
Okay, alright, we'll, we'll take care of you. I want to mention rural county days, and what that is, is our NFEDP organization started a couple of years ago in January, having a rural county days where we go over to Tallahassee and kinda make ourself known over there. Well, that program has expanded to include most of the rural counties that are in our region. And so, on January the 15th, there's actually a reception, which all of you are invited to, but I do need to know within this next week if you plan on attending, and I can give you the details. But it's a reception where all of our legislators will attend to be there, so it's just kind of a networking event, and that, that will be in the afternoon from 6:00 to 8:00. And then the next day, we actually will be attending, and we will have a tent set up, and we will be marketing Swanee County. So, we're looking for all things Swanee County, if any of the businesses have items that they want to contribute for us to put out to show people what it is, we'll be doing, showing off both tourism side and we'll be showing off our, our business community there. So, we will be there all day on the 16th, and all of you, of course, are invited to attend on the 16th and work that event with us, I just have to know names for credentialing purposes on both days, so, yes sir?
Would this be during, during the week of the legislative session?
It is that very first beginning days of it, yes sir, so this year, we're at the very front of it instead of the tail end of it. So again, and I will try to get, maybe I'll get with Mandy on that, we can send out an email to remind you guys of that tomorrow, you can let me know if, if you're interested in either one of those events. We also are working on an article with Business and Focus Magazine, which is kind of a business, economic development type magazine that goes out throughout the country. It is scheduled to be published in February, and we are looking at all things again Swanee County, and we're talking about the future and what's going on here. We have been out kinda taking some pictures of the community, some of our businesses. We actually were at the FPL site, I don't know if you guys have been by there lately, but it's coming along, they're actually starting to set the panels on the, on the site, right at the interstate portion, and they're almost finished driving, driving all the piles, and he told me how many there were, around 45,000 of those things or something, so, big number. But they, they were very, very accommodating, they actually took their drone up for us and flew it all over the site and took pictures of that whole site for us and gave us drone pictures to use in this article that we're doing. So, I was very appreciated because there is a piece that we talk about, you know, energy and, and that kind of thing in there, and what Swanee County is doing on that side. So, just want to let you know, and they are still on schedule to finish up in April right now, so everything is pretty much on schedule out there. I want to mention our friends over at North Florida College, spring enrollment is underway, and I got an update from those guys. And it looks like this spring here, they are gonna be offering, I think it's eight classes, which is freshman English II, Humanities, College Algebra, College Statistics, American National Government, Strategies for Academic Success, Fundamentals of Human Nutrition. And so, they are very happy that they've added classes, and all the classes have met the requirements obviously, and they do expect them to be full, so they continue to grow and are still very positive and excited about what they're doing over there. So, I appreciate you guys letting them use that facility, and they are very happy to be here in Swanee County. Next piece I want to mention is our friends at Duke Energy, you know, they've been looking at doing a, a facility now for some time and we can finally talk about it. It's, it's going to be around 8,500 square feet, and basically, it's gonna, it's gonna be like a substation building maintenance facility out there, so all of their, the guys that you see running around in local, this is gonna be home now and from other counties as well, so they will have some new employees out there. It's gonna be out on 90, just past Pilgrim's, on the, they own a piece of property that backs up to the back of that solar site that they have, so they have already made contact with Ron, they're working on the special permit right now, and they hope to break ground in about two months. So, when they do that, they have requested that we all come out and do a little groundbreaking ceremony, so it's going to be a nice piece, and we are proud to have them here. Okay, on the tourism side, I'll give you a quick update out at Busy Bee, since the last report I had, we have moved 2,974 pieces of material, so that's for about a quarter since my last staff report. So, you can break that down to days or months or however you want to do it, but those are all pieces that are marketing Swanee County that we weren't doing this time last year. So, if you're looking, about 3,000 pieces of material in three months, so that's, that's a lot of Swanee County getting out there. Also, Chris, there's, we do a welcome showcase where we go to, every year at the Florida-Gorgia game, they try to go to the I-75 Welcome Center and do a showcase about our area, and they figure they're gonna have a lot of people traveling that corridor, so she attended that, and again, we handed out, you know, all things Swanee County there as well, so that was back in October, so it's already passed, but we did participate in that. Also, last week, there was a two-day course on adventure travel training which she attended, and it was put on by Visit Florida, and basically, the purpose of it was to, to try to learn the behaviors of people and what they're looking for when they're, when they're, you know, going to travel, different profiles of the adventure traveler and stuff, so this was put on by Visit Florida, she attended that last week, she enjoyed it very much, and there will be a part two coming up in the spring. The last piece on that is the Florida Tourism Forum, which was in Panama City a few weeks ago, and Chris and I both attended that, and I don't know if you guys saw anything on that, we just put some stuff out today, we were kinda waiting to the meet, we put it out on Facebook, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you a little bit of background, the forum is about all things tourism, so just like an economic development summit, we're learning about tourism, and it is the statewide conference, so it is one that I attend. But they also have a component that's called the Flagler Awards, and that's where they recognize people that do good things in tourism. So, this is a little bit of a press release, I'm gonna give you a couple of highlights. And what it says is that the Swanee County Tourist Development Council, also known as Visit Swanee, recently won a Flagler Award in the category of rural marketing from Visit Florida for its efforts to promote Swanee County as a vacation destination. The awards are an annual statewide competition recognizing outstanding Florida tourism marketing. The program was created by Visit Florida to honor the countless individuals and organizations that helped position Florida as the number one travel destination in the world. Each year, the awards pay tribute to determined efforts of those who use their skill, resourcefulness, creativity, and innovative spirit to market Florida to the world. With the fierce competition for more well-known tourist destinations, the TDC of, obviously, Swanee County, decided to undertake new initiatives of bringing more awareness to our county and increasing the number of visitors each year. This award, won by Swanee County, is based on this campaign which created, which included the creation of its new logo, a new website, and videos that we're using to promote Swanee County. So, basically, the whole entire campaign that we have been doing, we were judged on that through all rural counties in the state of Florida, and we actually got the Silver Award, which was second, Gulf County, but, you know, Hurricane blew them away, so they, they kinda got first out there, but I think there's 32 rural counties and we placed second in that category, so we were very proud of that, and Swanee County was represented very well at that conference. Upcoming events, don't forget Swanee Lights are going on now, November 30th through the 28th, these are all events that the TDC sponsors and helps with marketing on. Also, in the spring, at the Spirit of Swanee, will be the Swanee Spring Reunion, March 19th through the 22nd, Wings Over Swanee will be March 27th and 28th, and the Catfish Festival will be April 11th. And that's my report, sir.
Appreciate that.
Any questions on anything?
Anyone on the board have any questions or comments for Mr. Norris?
I do, I'm just curious, what, do you have numbers on the Christmas festival?
Numbers as far as?
Got an idea on attendance or anything like that?
No, sir.
Bigger than before, smaller than before? I'm prying.
I, you know, Saturday, I was, Friday and Saturday, I was working the census booth all weekend, and I, I don't know, it's, it's, you know, some pieces looked a little more crowded, some a little less crowded, it's kinda hard to tell unless you were kind of assigned with that task of going out and trying to do that, and unfortunately, we were a little shorthanded working our booth here, so Saturday, I didn't even leave the booth, I was there all day. But, I mean, there was a good crowd on Saturday, for sure, and it was, it was a nice event, and, you know, it takes a lot to put that event on.
I'm sorry, I was not able to, to make it, but.
Yeah, no, it, it's a huge process, and I understand those guys and what they had to fight to put it on, so, I mean, it was a successful event, I compliment the chamber on all their hard efforts, because I know how tough that is, but, you know, the weather was perfect, and, and I know a lot of these guys were down there too, so.
From about 10 to 1, it was packed.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of the pattern it follows, it's always kind of that midday thing on Saturday, 10 to 2 is usually when you see the big crowd, you know, and of course, you know, without, without Busy Bee, that guy does so much with our community and the snow down there, and you weren't there, so I don't know if you realize, he actually had Coca-Cola, we, we were working on this last year, but we couldn't get it pulled off because it takes a little long to get it in place, but he had the Coca-Cola Corporation bring in the semi truck with Coca-Cola Santa Claus, Coca-Cola Miss Claus, the Polar Bear, and they took a picture of every child that wanted a picture, and it was handed to you immediately, and every child got a toy, and then they had free samples of the, I think it's Power Aid that Coca-Cola, it's not Gatorade, but that they, their product, as long as people lined up, I mean, it was, it was an incredible piece that he brought in, and so, we really, if you, if you guys see those guys from Busy Bee, especially Marshall, between, between all that, the fireworks, the snow, the Coca-Cola piece, he, he does, so, that, that event would not be what it is without him, so.
Commissioner Hale?
Yeah, I had a question.
Yes, sir.
You were speaking, like, you and Chris, I go to some of these events where you guys can promote Swanee County, like at the, the restaurant, I guess, the visit area, do they provide, like, the things you need there, or do you have and take what you need as far as, like?
We, we have to take what we need, and, and she kinda handles that piece, and, and what they do is, is you, Visit Florida and then the natural Florida group, they kinda work together, and they, they kinda pick certain times of the year when they think that traffic is gonna be, you know, the most beneficial to them, and then they, they go in as a group, and every county can set up a display and show off what we have. And quite honest, that's one of the things we're fighting right now on, on tourism and economic development, I mean, we, we don't have a lot to handle, you know, the tourism people want more, the economic guys are a little bit different, you know, they're not looking for a bunch of fancy flyers, so to speak, they just want to know about our properties and things. But when we go there, we do struggle to have.
And that's my question, do we have the apparel or the tools necessary?
We, no, no, we don't, we don't, we, we have some of what we need, like I say, that first brochure that, that we printed this year, I think, you know, Mr. Scott, you know, obviously is very important on, on that committee, and then Commissioner Gamble too, and he can tell you, we, that first brochure was a big deal, and we moved 10,000 of those within a couple of months, and we printed 10,000 more, that's how quickly we moved them. So, but, but what we don't have is, just like the event we're going to in January, one of the things they recommend is, you know, I got a keychain or little things that say Swanee County or something, or Visit Swanee, or things to hand out and to promote, and we, we don't have those yet, we just, our, our, our budget just hasn't allowed us to be able to do a little bit of that, but I, I think we're getting, we're getting closer to be able to, and we're gonna need to do some of those things, the more we're involved, the more things we need.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ms. Fleming?
Yes, sir.
Back to Commissioner Richardson's question, question, he asked about how many people there are, I, I know more people there this year than it was the previous year because of the weather.
That's true, that's true.
That was the answer.
Yes, sir, you, you, you're exactly right.
But I see the streets that were not occupied, they were occupied now more, to me, it's like it's expanding out, more people coming, and they're like a network, they're, they're stretching out further out in, in, in little areas in, in the city of Live Oak, like on some of these streets back here.
Yes.
They have set up tents, that they are selling stuff now, I don't know whether they bring it to the chamber, I don't see Hillary here, I don't know whether they bring it to, to the chamber to have the permission to do it, I don't know, but I know that they're doing it, it's happening, but it's carrying the crowd out further.
There, there, and again, like you say, I, you know, I don't want to speak for the chamber, but I do know we receive phone calls of people piggybacking off of that event throughout the community and not participating in it. I, you know, I don't know if you can police that or not, I don't know how.
Yeah, and I had the opportunity to, to, to be a judge, and I think it was quite exciting to, to see it versus riding on the, in, you know, in the parade, that you can see every float that come by, and I saw some beautiful floats, and I think it was class act. Also.
Did you see them all?
See what?
What, what is the deal, you pointing at me tonight?
Well, you're not the chairman anymore.
Commissioner Flynn didn't vote for Lynn and I, that's for sure.
For us, no, I didn't.
That's why I told him at the Christmas party, he's like, class act, class act, I must have.
Yeah, we've, we do try to get people from community, and it, and it is a different, when you're sitting there judging all the floats versus if you're in the parade, it is a different feel.
Right, and the reason why I'm saying that, there was one of, my church had a float in the parade, and one of the drivers, he was, he told me, he said, I didn't know that many folk was in Swanee County, you know, when you're riding on there and you're looking out, he said, there were hundreds of people that as far as you could see.
Oh, yeah.
And, and, and that, that parade really set the tone for Christmas on the square. I know there was talks, you was talking about moving it one time, and my preference is, I hope that the chamber, I like, let it stay downtown, you know, and I think that, that is the highlight of, of that Christmas, the atmosphere, the way it's set up and located, I think.
Right.
To clarify this, if anyone needs to know anything about Christmas on the square, you need to see Mr. Fleming.
Hey, there you go.
He's on his game tonight. We appreciate you.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Anything else, anybody?
No.
Appreciate you guys, and I do want to wish you Merry Christmas, and, thank you.
Forty-five minutes is up now, Mr. Norris.
I'll tell you what.
Thank you, buddy. Okay, moving along, general business, item six, any, any update on 136 tonight? You good, Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for that. Item seven, additional gen, items, we have two, been brought to my attention. Item number one, authorization to enter into an agreement with Florida Gulf and Atlanta Railroad LLC for design services in the amount not to exceed $40,000, Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is the new owner of the railroad. We started this process with CSX, there we're gonna design the new crossing, I'm not gonna go through the whole story, but that crossing is associated with our CDBG funding, we started the process, CDBG agreed to allow us to do this crossing, we had to stop for an environmental review for eight months or so, got that completed, we were entering into the agreement with CSX to do the design, they stopped everything because they decided to sell that track, so it's been months now, we're trying to enter into this agreement to get the design completed because that $300,000 appropriation that we got from the state to build 175th has to connect to this crossing, and we need that tie-in completed, the design, so that we can get that project underway because DOT wants to know why we're so far behind, so we've been talking to them about that as well. Otherwise, I would have waited a couple more weeks, but we just finally got the agreement in place, Mr. Pravat has reviewed it, and we were able to go ahead and get it to you now rather than continue waiting.
Thank you. Do I have any questions or comments from the board?
No, sir. Make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hale. Got a motion by Commissioner Hale, a second by Commissioner Gamble. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item number two, authorization to execute non-disclosure agreement with Site Improve Inc. as part of due diligence process. Site Improve Inc. is one of the vendors that the county will be utilizing for work associated with ADA compliance. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, there are actually three companies that we will be dealing with, um, that pertain to this ADA compliance, which is associated with our website. This particular company is a company that simply evaluates the information that the entire public can view, uh, to ensure that we are compliant and will notify us if they see any issues or concerns. Uh, but we need to enter into this non-disclosure agreement. The non-disclosure agreement is actually, um, associated with the company more so than us. It's so that we can obtain information about the company, not so that they can obtain information about us. So that's the nature of that. We need to go ahead and get that approved because, as you know, we're, we've been working real hard to get this ADA thing under wraps.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from the board? Do I have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving along, uh, before we go any further, I'd like, uh, had to speak with, uh, Ms. Catherine Allen before the meeting and had the pleasure to meet two new ag agents we have. If you could come up and introduce them and real quick and just like to welcome them to the county and...
Y'all thought I was joking when I told you they were gonna do that to you?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, it is my pleasure to introduce our two new ag agents. They've been on board for, uh, about two, let's see, three months. And, uh, so we wanted them to have a, a little bit of feet under them before we came. And that way too, would help them to understand a little bit more about the county. I always like to bring the agents in because, um, there may be opportunities that they need to come and present. So, um, I'd like to, so come on, step on up or, uh...
Come on up, ladies.
Come on up. So, uh, stepping up to the, to the microphone right now is Sylvia Willis. And, um, she is an ag agent. She deals specifically with commercial crops. So she's dealing with the row crops and the commercial vegetable agents. Um, she went to UF, she got her masters at UF, but, um, went to work and did some, uh, stu-, grad student, did some work on her thesis there, um, with watermelons. And so if you wanna know anything about watermelon grafting, guess what? Sylvia is your lady. And then next to her is Courtney Darling. And Courtney is our ag agent who focuses on livestock, natural resources, and forages. And, um, interestingly enough, she and her husband had, um, a perennial peanut farm in McElpin. And, um, they're building, they have a house that is, um, um, uh, almost ready. They're hoping to move in by the end of December. And, uh, so we're, we're getting them rocking and rolling. But, um, they've been out and about, um, doing field visits, farm visits, all sorts of stuff, um, getting up to speed. And, um, we're really fortunate because they did both go to UF for their, um, their, um, graduate work. And so they knew a lot of specialists and researchers. And so that's given them a real head start in terms of who to call at the university when they have issues. So we're real pleased. And I'll let them say a little bit more about themselves.
You told them.
I am shorter. Um, as she said, my name's Sylvia. I went to UF to get my masters in watermelon, basically. I'm originally from Indiana, and I moved here just for school and decided to stay. I don't have to deal with snow, which has already happened multiple times back home. So I really enjoyed working here. And I really liked the rural feeling again, coming from Gainesville. I grew up in a very small town, less than 400 people. So when they said I was moving to a big town here, I was like, "Oh, this is what you call big? Okay." Um, but it's been great driving around and seeing people out in the community, working the ag days and meeting the Commissioners has been really great. So thank you.
Thank you.
Town would be the key word in that big part. Town.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bravat?
Is Professor Rick Latton still up there? Yeah?
In what?
Uh, watermelons at Indiana.
Oh, okay. I didn't do watermelon.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So this was all new getting here. Like, what, how do you even grow watermelon? It was all new when I got done here.
All right. Next.
Yes, I'm taller. Um, so yes, I'm Courtney Darling. And, um, I'm living in Gilchrist County right now. So this is a big town compared to that. Um, Belle and Trenton are very small. Um, but yeah, it's been great so far. Um, it's been really fun meeting the producers and, and meeting all of you today. Um, I got my masters at UF in weed science. And then I focused, uh, um, in my undergrad on forages. So really suited for the position I'm in now. So if you have any questions about weeds, even in your lawns, that's exciting for me too. So, thank you.
Thank you ladies so much. Do I have any questions for any ladies? Everybody good?
Thank you.
We appreciate y'all. And we appreciate y'all attending the University of Florida. As a board, we're a, we're a four to one vote on the board, so we, we got y'all covered.
It's all right. Mr. Chairman, do you mind while we're at this point?
Sir?
Do you mind while we're at this point if I bring Ms. Hancock up here?
Absolutely not. The floor is yours.
Ms. Hancock, would you mind coming up here and talk to us a little bit about this weekend?
Okay, this weekend is Christmas at Heritage Park and Gardens. I don't wanna talk, no mic. They don't, I don't like being up here. But anyway, uh, so anyway, it's, uh, Christmas at Heritage Park and Gardens. And it's from 10:30 till 2:30. And there'll be lots of free things. Pray for good weather. But there's, uh, uh, horse rides, uh, there's, uh, train rides, there's all kinda games, face painting. And all of that is free. And, uh, the only thing that there will be, uh, charged for is, uh, there's food. The Interact Club will be selling hot dogs and, and drinks. And, uh, the Art Gill will have cookies and hot chocolate. And we will have two house tours. And the house tours are $2. And I will be given part of those. And one of our board members found a, uh, found out, when he took a tour, a connection to the house and his family.
Sure.
That he did not know about.
Had no idea. But I will tell you guys, if you haven't had the house tour, I would go out and, and pay the $2 to have this young lady walk you through 'cause it's very interesting, very, very interesting.
And I also, I have plenty of, like, little, uh, flyers on that. Also, we are having a drawing. And, uh, it's for $500 cash money. And, uh, but it's, uh, $5 a ticket or, uh, five for 20. And I do have some tickets. Anybody wants to buy any. And, uh, they will be drawn on Saturday.
Good. All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hancock. I will say, as being part of the board in previous years, Heritage Park and Gardens, it's, uh, man, it's really grown and, and became something. And we appreciate all your efforts that you do there. It's, uh, so many people that, that give their time for no pay. It's just for the love of the community and doing what's great. And, uh, we really appreciate y'all for that.
Absolutely.
Moving on to item number eight, public concerns and comments. If we have anyone from the public that would like to speak, now is your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll move along. Mr. Harris, do you have any closing comments? Always.
I've got a few.
Short and sweet.
I, I'm gonna make a few comments about Christmas on the Square. This, this was the first year that I actually went to Christmas on the Square. And I was pretty impressed. Um, I was impressed with the number of vendors. And, uh, I know how difficult it is to try to coordinate an event like that. But I saw Marshall out there, uh, measuring off with a group of people. They're running around, just measuring off all those locations for the vendors. I guess it was Thursday night. But, uh, you may recall that prior to that event, we had a mess on the front of that Mizel Building out there. And I wanna compliment our, some of our employees that stayed out there really late at night with me, several nights, trying to ensure that we had a sidewalk that people could walk on. And then we had to barricade everything else off to make sure they didn't fall off of that sidewalk because the pavement wasn't done on the, in the parking area.
I'd like to compliment you because, I mean, it was after dark and you was in the middle of the road. I thought something was wrong.
You thought I was sleepwalking? Well, I tell you what, um, I'm really thankful. We've got really good people dedicated to getting a job done. I mean, they step with, step up when they need to step up. And, um, this particular occasion, it happened to be a lot of people in Public Works. But I tell you, in our departments, we've got great people that'll always step up when they need to and make things happen. So I was very appreciative of that. But really impressed with the, uh, Christmas on the Square. The weather was nice. Uh, and, uh, I hope that continues to be a very successful event because it does draw a lot of people. I don't know, you know, most of those people that I saw, I, I didn't have a clue who they were or where they were from. So I don't know if we're drawing people from out of county or if these are mostly locals that showed up, um, at the Christmas on the Square event. But, uh, some of those vendors really had some really neat, very unique products that they were selling out there too. So it was, it was pretty interesting. I enjoyed it. But that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Moving along, uh, board member comments. Mr. Richardson?
I have a couple things. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, first of all, I just wanna let, uh, you all know that this week, past weekend, we, uh, went down and, uh, was that, uh, Swanee River Catfish Festival? My wife had a booth in there and...
Christmas festival.
Christmas festival. Christmas festival. I'm sorry. I put the C in there and Catfish is coming up.
Catfish is in April.
The Christmas festival, well, I think it was well-attended. It was a little bit, I think, we had, all the vendors were sold out, um, which is good. Uh, that's what we did last year. Uh, we had some weather that was coming across in the morning that was kinda scary. And I think it frightened a few people away. But by the time, uh, uh, noontime came, the sun was out bright, shining, beautiful weather. And, um, I appreciate all those who, um, who attended and was part of that. But I really wanna give a shout out to Parks and Recreation for doing all that they did to, um, to help, uh, make that successful. The tables that they bring down, um, always putting out garbage cans, providing the, um, for those facilities and stuff and, and that stuff. We, we just really appreciate. We have a, a good county staff that works together to make sure all of our local events, no matter where they are, um, work, work out. And, um, Fire and Rescue were, was down there with, um, a maze. I guess they did the same thing up here and, uh, with the, uh, Christmas on the Square. And Eddie did a good job there. Um, and all the men that, that took place in it, sheriffs there as well. So well-attended. I think it was, uh, it was a good, well-attended by our county, um, folks. So, uh, thank you for that. Uh, on, on the heels of that, we wanted to be in the parade and, uh, for the commission. And some things fell through on, um, on a cart to be in the parade with. And, and we had to scramble at the last minute to get a cart. And Greg, uh, got us a cart. And I really appreciate that, uh, last minute. And I will emphasize last minute, um, scrambling. That it didn't think was gonna work out Saturday when I went to get it without a trailer. But I, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta give, uh, some kudos out to Nathan, who, um, who got in his truck, hooked up the trailer, and brought it down to, uh, brought down the cart to Branford and stayed the whole time for the parade. Uh, we even invited him to sit on the, um, on the cart with us, but he wouldn't. I said that people would be asking him for favors at, in, in grocery stores and stuff. He did. Thank you, Commissioner. So, but we got it all done. I, I will say, the one bad thing about the cart was it needs to get completely fixed before we put it in another parade. So, um, but otherwise, what a great, uh, effort that was, uh, just some of me and Clyde could be in there. So appreciate that. Institute for County Government, which is a new name for, uh, FAC's, uh, their, um, education program for county commissioners. You know, county commissioners go through a certified, a certified county commissioner, uh, program that, that teaches county, new county commissioners what it is to be a county commissioner. And, um, we come in all the time, a lot of times, uh, new county commissioners come in with a preconceived notion of what it is and what it takes to be one. Uh, and, and they do a good job of, of, of getting us, uh, in front of the law and statutes and, and helps us to understand budgets like that. Well, uh, they just started a, um, a new class that I was grateful to be a part of. It was an Advanced County Commissioner Two program. And I am, uh, I could say I'm proud to be the first, uh, one from this county, commissioner from this county to actually go through that class. It was inaugural class. And we just finished it. It's called a leadership forum. And, um, I, I would encourage, uh, number one, the public, continue to support our, our, um, uh, involvement with FAC, uh, and all that they do. Because they really help counties. And they really help county governments get a lot of things done. Um, and I would encourage the fellow board members to, if they have a chance, to, um, get into this class, to take it. Because it was phenomenal on what it taught us. And, uh, well, obviously, we don't have time to go into all that. But it was just great information. It is well worth it. And, uh, you will be glad that you went through this class. So when you get done with your Advanced County Commissioner class, Commissioner Hale, and, uh, and eventually, uh, Commissioner Stableton, Mr. Chairman.
What do you mean eventually? What are you saying?
You're in the Certified County Commissioner Program right now, aren't you? Are you in the Advanced County Commissioner?
He's in advanced.
I got my plaque at home.
Ah, see, he forgot. It's right. He got the plaque. That's right. I'm sorry. No, when you...
You might need to go a little bit.
I can understand that one, then, while you questioned that. I apologize. I didn't mean it that way. Um, when you get done with it, please go through it. Um, it's good.
Thank you, sir.
Last but not least, Merry Christmas to everyone. Hope you have a, a joyous Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now to my good friend, Mr. Fleming.
I, I, I'm trying to begin where to start, that, you know, where I wanna start at. But, uh, to my colleagues, to, uh, my commissioners, uh, it's been a pleasure working with you this whole year. And, uh, I put this group of commissioners to any other group that I have ever known. And I, and I should say to, uh, to our staff, Mr. Harris, and to the staff, I watch what you do. I watch how you do things. How, how the progress going around here. I, I have no gift to give you, but I'm just gonna give them words. To, uh, to the staff, how, how wonderful, and I say this all the time, I can't say it enough, our staff puts stuff together for the commissioners. You know, uh, I know Mandy, when she send me these text messages, she probably say, "I know Mr. Fleming get tired of me sending these texts." But, uh, thank you for keeping me up, briefing me on all the information that I need to do. And to our attorney, thank you so much for keeping us out of a bind. And, and I, I should, should say to, to all the staff, department heads, we never mentioned Fire and Rescue, what you do. You, you, y'all do a great job also. Um, I know previously, I, anytime I call, I got a response. And I'm looking for, for, you know, if I need you to call, you know, anything, I know that you'll do it. And, um, just can't say enough. I don't wanna say it all. I can't say it all in one night. My brother shared something with me. He's younger than I am. Uh, we bought this piece of property and I'm the one that like to get things done. And he told me, he shared with me last night. He said, "You know, a wrong one built overnight. You need to back off of what you do. You work hard. You work hard all the time." And I told him, I said, "Well, I'd just like to see things completed and I, and just do something else." I continue to do that. And I'm beginning to learn to slow down a little bit, to, to wind down just a little bit. Uh, he's, Chairman said to his friend, "I'm, I'm glad to know that you're my friend." And to, to Nathan, for carrying the golf cart down the other night, down to the, uh, parade, Commissioner Richardson, he failed to mention that he had kinda canceled it. But then he said, uh, then I got a text and a call from Mr. Scott that we will get that golf cart down there to Branford. And I'm, I'm proud to say that I was glad to be a part of it. And last and not least, but I'd like to, um, there's a young lady that's moved to this community. She's one of my constituents right now. And she, she's, she's, she's moved to this community. She's been a part of the community all her life, all her life. But she has deep roots here. And she's sitting out there with her uncle. And she's smiling so graciously. And, uh... And she's sitting out there with her uncle and she's smiling so graciously and she's one of Swanee County residents and sitting along with her cousin out there. And so I have two constituents here tonight. I'm proud to say that they're here and they're stuff in blue and... I don't like to call names because I forget, but anyway, she knows exactly what I'm talking about. She's here, Monica, Monica, so good to see you here tonight and you, you know, welcome you to come to our board meeting. I, you know, I tell all the constituents, I tell all the people that support me, come to the meeting, see what's going on, know what's going on. If I don't know the answer, these Commissioners can help with answers, Mr. Harris can help with answers, but I know that attorney can surely do it. He will surely do it, he won't fail us. But anyway, I thank each of you and I hope that each have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Chairman, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Mr. Gamble?
Well, I was going to talk about Christmas on the square and Branford, but y'all pretty much summed it up. I will say that we did have a great turnout at both. I was there for both of them. One thing at Branford that they did, a group did as a fundraiser, was all the little girl, you've seen the Grinch and the people of Whoville and the girls have their hair up in these long points. They had a lady down there that could take a child and in about two seconds have their hair standing that tall with Christmas lights wrapped around it and tinsel and every kid down there was running around like that and it was neatest thing. They had Whoville set up. It was a great time, the community came together, I was glad to see the turnout and...
I guess it's safe to say that your hair wasn't done that way.
They tried.
Why are you looking at me when you say that?
That's why I said I was impressed with it. But there was, it was a great turnout and their parade was, they had a good parade. The theme was Keeping Christ and Christmas and they, they had a huge turnout and the way that it loops around, the front of the parade almost had to stop to let the back of it come on out, there were so many floats in it, so it was a great time. Other than that, I just want to tell everyone Merry Christmas. I hope y'all have a safe Christmas, Happy New Years. I don't have anything.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble. Mr. Hale?
Yes, sir. I heard the Beta Club did real good down there too.
Oh, yeah, you want me to tell that? No, I'll tell you about that.
So it's really, it's a heartwarming feeling to sit up here and hear these guys talk about how well we work together and the group of employees that we have and the staff that we have and that goes from the top to the bottom. I think you've guys heard me say that in here before. I'm very thankful to each and every one of you guys and it's good to hear everyone, they feel the same way. Not to carry on about this, but Christmas on the square was fantastic. I think I've seen more family members there in three days than I've seen in three years. Same thing with friends, it just continues to grow and it's a great thing for our community. The parade, someone mentioned the parade, I think it was Clyde talking about all the people there. That's where it really gets me is because you're moving on a golf cart, Commissioner Stapleton was with me and his wife and my wife was there and you just see faces out there. You just see faces, you see those kids' faces light up, you just see the folks that you want to see every day, but sometimes you get busy and you don't, but it's just that moment that you have to connect with them by waving or throwing a piece of candy at them or whatever, but I'm pretty sure a thousand dollars worth of candy does not make that whole parade, I can tell you.
It does not.
But the parade's a great thing and really true, just wish everyone a Merry Christmas. I said this earlier, you know, there's a lot of folks that are not as, you know, as fortunate as we are, I believe, and we need to keep those folks in our prayers and reach out to them, do what we can during this time of the season. So thank you, guys, I appreciate all of you.
Mr. Chairman, Eric and Keith, and when I said staff...
That's right.
Eric and Keith, you're all included.
Yes, sir. I'd just like to, I'd just like to echo what the board said. I mean, it's been, I will say this, it's been my first year here, it's been a pleasure. Learned a lot in a year and just grateful for the, for the help and the guidance and we got some great people that'll step up and tell you when you're doing something good and they're just as great because they'll tell you when you're doing something bad and that's the way you learn. But I just appreciate each of you. I will, just to follow up on Christmas on the square, the last few years I've been involved, they've, Busy Bee's done the snow and with Fire Rescue, we've all tried to get together and wash that snow, melt it down and it just takes hours to get the road cleared off so you can have Christmas on the square on Saturday morning, but I want to thank the county and Mr. Harris for, I went to them and asked them if he could help us out with some dump trucks and some equipment down there and we went in there in about an hour and a half and had that road, all that snow cleaned up and hauled off and the road opened up and it, I had some folks, it meant a lot to me. When it was over, I was going to get my truck to leave to go home and some folks come up and they said, that's, that's professional operation y'all got right there. Them folks, y'all got working for y'all, they come in here, those trucks are clean, that equipment's clean. Those guys got out and spoke people and was respectful in any way that they could be. And that's, at the end of the day, that's what it's about. We're running a business here and we work for the people of this county and we're going to continue to do our best for these people. Other than that, I'd just like to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and get some rest and relax because as a board, we're going to get some work done next year. We got a lot done this year and I look forward to hitting the ground running.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate all of you. With that, all I need is a motion, fellas.
I move to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, before you vote on that motion, can I just announce something? Because I've been asked several times and I forgot to mention it. I've had a lot of people ask if we're going to allow those that want to see the Mizel building as a finished product, walk through there. We're going to arrange for that. We're getting real close, there are just a couple more little things that we need to do inside, mostly floor covering, but I'll let you know and we'll try to get the word out for those that want to take a walk through the building when we get finished over there. And I just want to say, there's at least half a dozen employees that spend a lot of time over there working on the inside of that building, working on the building itself, separate and apart from those that I was talking about with that sidewalk. And when the right time comes, I want to recognize them and all the good work they put into that thing, so that will be coming. I just need to let you know that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The fanciest hundred-year-old feed building you've ever been in.
Absolutely. We need...
Before and after picture on the wall in there.
I walked through it the other day and I'm like, whoa, nothing the same.
I had a motion by Commissioner Richardson, I believe, and a second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.